Thank you. I'd like to call the City Caucus meeting to order for Monday, June 9th, 2025. We have one public hearing this evening. If the clerk would please read.
Public hearing number one for the redirection of a portion of Chrysler Avenue from a two-way street to a one-way street from the intersection of Crane and Main Street to Ostrander Place.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two for original consideration. A resolution calling for a public hearing for weight limit postings on King's Road.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number two for original consideration. A resolution authorizing fee waivers for exterior building repair permits.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Yes, Mr. Williams? On item number two, roll call? Okay, thank you. Item number three.
Item number three for original consideration. A resolution recognizing the celebration of Juneteenth, 2025.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four for original consideration. A resolution recognizing Caribbean American Heritage Month.
Discussing committee without objection. On consent. Item number four A for unanimous consent.
Item number four A for unanimous consent. A resolution supporting funding for Belmont Pop Warner program.
I need a motion to place item number four A on the floor. Moved by Mr. Williams. Second by Mr. Mancini. All in favor? Is there any objection to item number four A? Since there's no objection to this item, may I have a motion to place onto the consent agenda? Moved by Mr. Farley. Second by Mr. Mancini. All in favor? If there's no objection, we can go, we can put this on the consent agenda. If there's nothing more to come before the City Council Caucus, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Williams. All in favor? We are adjourned. I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order for Monday, October, excuse me, October, June 9th, 2025. And this afternoon, we do not have anyone to, to offer up the prayer. However, I would like to, as a stand, I'd like to offer this prayer for the community. Dear Lord, I bring the people of Schenectady to you today. I pray that you give everyone comfort, companionship, and hope. Please surround us with your love and care and make us feel your presence in our lives. Lord, help this council to be an instrument to seek out, to help, and to give support where is needed. God, I ask that you open the eyes of others to give a hand on the back to those who they come in contact with. I pray that you bring people together into their, their lives who can be supportive and encouraging, and that you would open up opportunities for them to form meaningful relationships. Help us, Lord, to find joy and fulfillment in our lives and our duties that you've assigned to us, despite what we may go through. Thank you, God, for the gift of community and how you bring people together. We pray that you use us to bless everyone in our midst and to show them all love and compassion. Amen. I'd ask Councilmember Patrick to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If the clerk, yes, if the clerk could please complete the roll call.
Burroughs absent. Mr. Farley? Mr. Mancini?
Here.
Mr. Mutuverin?
Present.
Ms. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. Williams? Ms. Porterfield?
Here. We have one public hearing this evening, and I just want to remind everyone that the public comment period for, um, on public hearings is four minutes. And I also ask that you respectfully only speak to the subject of the public hearing itself. Thank you. I have four people who are signed up to speak for the public hearing. Public hearing number one is regarding the redirection of a portion of Chrysler Avenue from a two-way street to a one-way street from the intersection of Crane and Main Streets to Ostrander Place. So the first person of the four to speak is Shemel Davis.
Good evening. I've been in two accidents on that road. It's very small. It's hard for three cars to fit, and there's parking on both sides. I believe it should be changed to a one-way.
All right. Well, thank you. Marshawn Dobbs.
I agree it should be changed to a one-way.
Thank you. Ellie Pepper.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, City Council members. I totally agree with making that a one-way street. It's really dangerous to go down that street when it's two-way. If everybody's parked on one side, it's really hard to get out of the way if somebody coming towards you. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Dean Marabado, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam President, members of the council. Yeah, it is a dangerous situation right now. I've driven on that street many times. It's really difficult. And reading through the surveys that were given out to people, it seemed like it was unanimously, felt that there should be a one-way street. So I agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public hearing, um, comment period on public hearing number one closed. I'll ask for approval of minutes from March 27th, 2025. Motion by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Williams. All those in favor? Aye. The clerk, please read any communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, June 9th, 2025. Under official, there were none. Under general, from P.D. Boris, two emails regarding the public hearing. She is interested in finding out the reason for the redirection of traffic and how the data was collected. She also noted that she still has not been able to find her belongings. And under petitions, there were none.
Thank you. Call on council members for any committee reports. This time we'll have privilege over the floor related to the legislative agenda. So I just want to make a few things clear. I see there's, uh, there are people signed up who may not have been here for our process before. So I just want to give some clarifying, um, direction. The privilege of the floor is three minutes. And you would speak on the legislative, uh, agenda item that you came here to speak about. At the end of the three minutes, if you're still within your comment and you need to just finish it up, I will allow you to do that. But we ask that, that you not go over, um, an extended period of time. So for this, um, comment, and you have, and let me just also say, we left the sheets out there. We asked people to sign up ahead of time. So the names I will be calling are names who have signed up to speak at this particular time on this particular, um, agenda item. And we will not be entertaining any beyond that. Thank you. So I have seven, eight people signed up to speak, and the first person, Earl Walker? Wallace, Earl Wallace.
Am I correct that the, um, on the agenda item four A, you're considering, uh, supporting Pop Warner?
That is correct, sir.
That's the, uh, I'm from the Republican Party, and I would like to address that issue. Been involved with youth programming my entire life, been a high school English teacher, played Pop Warner football up in Saratoga Springs. Been a city resident since, uh, 1989. I would, um, request that we would, um, encourage parents to support Pop Warner and that we don't do it as a city council with public funds. Uh, how many sports will we end up supporting? I believe that, um, it's better for the community if parents are involved in raising the money. Perhaps the city can help the parents raise the money by, um, encouraging donations through a, a city council website. But, um, my main thing is I would like to see that, um, left to the parents. And we don't want to get our sports programs into a politicized program where perhaps maybe the next council may come along and decide that they're going to encourage certain coaches to be involved with the program because they're getting public money. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Hill?
Good evening. I'd like to speak on behalf of the Belmont Cheer Program. I am one of the, I am a co-coordinator of the Cheer Program along with Imani Resor, and I've been doing this for about at least three years now. I've been coaching for four. And I just wanted to say that our Cheer Program significantly lacks in being successful because we lack the appropriate equipment that we need to be successful comparable to other programs in the area. For example, there are programs like Colony, Pop Warner, who charge $350 for registration. We will never charge that high because we know the needs of our families in this community. And we, that's why we have consistently kept it pretty much the same price. We've, we've gone up a little bit this past year, but we, we don't really want to move it any higher because we know that our families cannot afford that, and it is shown, um, in previous seasons. We also, um, we lack, as far as where the funds would, would go for cheer related, it would be towards new uniforms, uh, cheer mats especially. It is hard to practice, if anybody knows anything about cheerleading, but it's hard to practice stunts and get more competitive because we don't have the cheerleading mats that we need. We also don't have anywhere to store them. We, you know, we work hard every year to fundraise. You know, a lot of people have mentioned, you know, us doing community fundraisers. We already do that, um, multiple times a year in different ways. Um, and there's still a, a lack of funds needed. And a lot of families struggle to, um, support the expensive travel that is required with, um, the competitiveness of the program. You know, as, as the further that cheer or even football moves on, um, the farther we go, and it gets more expensive. And so it's just always been a struggle for, um, the Cheer Program alone is, is really personal to me. I, I started in Belmont when I was five years old as a mascot and cheered all the way up through high school. And I, um, would love to keep it a competitive and successful program for our community because a lot of times, you know, Pop Warner is the only program that people can afford. When I was young, I wanted to do All-Star Cheerleading, and my family couldn't afford it, and many people can't afford it. So I just want to really emphasize that it's not, we're not asking for funds just, just to ask for them. We truly do think that we can be even more successful with the funds that we would be receiving. And I know on, on behalf of the football program, they too, um, have, have been successful in the past. But just imagine how much farther we could go if we had the support from the city and the community more than what we do now. Thank you.
Thank you. DC Dunkle?
Good afternoon. My name is DC Dunkle. I'm here on behalf of the youth that you see sitting behind us. I know many of you City Council members personally through my mentor Walter Simkins. And on behalf of Walter, one thing I'd like to make very clear is we're not beggars in the marketplace. That's not why we're here. We're not asking you to fully fund our program. We're asking you to support our program. There's a lot of funding that goes into this program that's not in the budget, such as mental support, emotional support. A lot of us coaches bring kids to and from practice on our own dollar that we don't include in this. We fund kids playing that's not included in that budget. So there's a lot of other costs that aren't associated with it. And sitting in these past two meetings is real disheartening hearing how much objection there is to supporting the youth of the city is you guys are all in these positions because you come to us to vote for you. And now you're looking the youth in the face, specifically you, because all the other members, from what I understand, are in agreement with moving this forward. But specifically you, Ms. Patrick, it's real disheartening.
Sir, you have to address the chair.
All right, Marion. I apologize. So it's extremely disheartening hearing that there's so much resistance to supporting the youth and consideration for what's going to be happening next year when we're trying to figure out what's going on right now. We, we're, we're turning away the fact that kids are hungry right now because other kids may possibly be hungry a couple of months from now, hypothetically speaking. Or next year, we should consider it when, right now, the problem is at hand. And considering the fact that the money is already there, but you don't know what to do with it, or you don't know where it's going. Those are exact words. We don't know where it's going. I don't understand what the problem is. We're, we're counting the cost, but what does it cost not to support these kids? What does it cost to turn these kids away from sports? What does it cost to have these kids on Chrysler Ave, right around the corner from the football field where you're trying to make it a one-way street? There's a lot of, a, a kid was just killed around the corner who could have been in something positive or doing something else. So when we invest in the youth, you see different results. I myself am an alumni of Belmont Pop Warner as a child. My mother never paid for a single year of me playing Pop Warner. But here I am, giving my time, four to five days a week, investing in these youth, investing my own dollars, investing my own time. And that's what comes back from investing in youth. Now tenfold return. And we're not asking you to, like I said, we're not asking you to carry the program because that's going to be done regardless. Speaking on the parents should be involved in and not become the city problem. The parent's been supporting this program for 50 years. We haven't asked for a dollar for 50 years. So you can't say what we should be doing when we've already proven the success of what we've done. We haven't, the, the program goes on with it without you. So as the representatives of this city, it's your guys' responsibility to support. We're not asking you to carry it. We're just asking you to support. And the amount of resistance that goes into support is extremely disgusting considering that these children that you're saying don't need it are the same children whose parents you're asking for to vote for you. The same children's parents are putting you in a position to deny them. I, I, I really don't get it as a member of this city. So clearly, I need to be more involved with, uh, what's going on down here in these city council meetings. And it's not directly a jab at anyone personal, but it, we gotta do better. Is Belmont's slogan, "One team, one family," and right now, you're turning down the entire family because you're concerned about families we don't even know of.
Your time has expired. Your time has expired.
That was a fast three minutes, Marion. But all right.
Put on your own iPhones if you think mine is wrong, okay? You can, we can all do that, but your time has expired.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Shemel Davis?
Good evening again. Um, I just want to mirror the remarks from DC Dunkle. I am, I am wholly disappointed, and, uh, I feel like you guys should be ashamed. The city should be ashamed. You, you talk about spending $3 million on sprinkler systems and golf courses and, 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 and all the organizations that get reoccurring funding without having to prove or show anything. But yeah, you got an organization that said that's been doing it like they said 50 years by theirself, helping the youth with or without the city. And the one time they come to the city is nothing but resistance. It is shameful and disgusting, man.
Marshawn Dobbs?
Hi, my name is Marshawn Dobbs. I'd just like to say, you know, um, this is definitely, my son's been playing for three years, and he loves this sport. This sport's been nothing but good to him. It does encourage a lot of the kids to stay out of the streets. It encourages them to, um, you know, have good grades in school. We're definitely disappointed with certain things. Um, there's, like I said, there's 250 kids that play, and there's many of parents that do vote, and we are noticing who we should vote for. So, uh, yeah, I'm just letting that be known. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellie Pepper?
Somebody's really tall. Good evening again. Um, I am in total support of finding some way to provide funding for the Belmont Pop Warner Organization. And if other sports organizations come, that's fine. That's okay. Let's, let's hear it. Let's support our youth. We're always talking about youth not having anything to do, youth hanging out on the streets. This is something that, uh, provides a good opportunity. And frankly, of all the places where my tax dollars could go, this is one place I would like to see it go. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Calvin Tyron?
Hello, how you doing tonight? My name is Calvin Tryon. I'm a lifelong resident of Schenectady, New York. This is my son right here. This was his first year playing, uh, football for the Belmont program. I noticed, uh, a lot of positive attributes that he gained from the time that he spent at the program this year. And honestly, Belmont is, uh, like a DNA of Schenectady. Like, it's a part of the fabric of the community. Like, my, my stepfather, he's a, uh, he's a lifelong city resident. He's a part of the team that was undefeated in the seventies. Like, he still pulls out his book and tells me about it to this day. Like, it's, it's really a part of our community. So I feel like we gotta put a little more importance on Belmont specifically. I know there's other sports programs. I'm not trying to take away anything, but Belmont is really a important part of our fabric of our community. For one, and for two, I feel like we need to exhaust all options on investing in the youth so we can actually get these kids to, to stick around. A lot of, a lot of kids don't, they, they want to go somewhere else to play football or, oh, let me go to Gilderland because they got this. And let me, let's, let's worry about here, keep our kids in this community. And then when they grow up to be adults, they'll come back and invest again in this community. You know what I mean? Like, so we can move forward with that type of stuff. And, and in general, like I said, the Belmont program is just positive. The coaches are doing a lot of amazing things. They've always done amazing things. And not everybody's going to be a professional athlete, but I was a, a member of Belmont as well. And there's just certain things you learn as in sports, being a part of a team and just discipline and other things like that that our youth is, in my opinion, lacking in this current generation. And so like I said, I would feel like, in my opinion, I feel like we need to invest, um, exhaust all options in investing in the youth. And that's just, that was, that was my small piece what I had to say. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. William Kent?
Good evening. Uh, my name is William Kent. I am the current president of Schenectady Belmont Pop Warner. I'm also a lifelong city resident as well. I grew up playing Pop Warner. My father was a coach, which really got me. My father was a coach, which really got me into it and helped me fall in love with the game. A lot of these people that you see here, I either met through the program or I grew up within the city as friends and as community members. And we've come together to honestly do something special. So I just want to touch on something that the gentleman had said prior to me, a couple people back, about parent involvement. What you're seeing right here is parent involvement. This is parent involvement. This is community involvement. We could talk about differences in communities and about single-family, single-parent households in one community to the next, and what that might look like for a single mother with four kids that's working two jobs to be able to help fundraise, or to be able to kick out extra money for their kid to be able to do something different. Or a city in Schenectady that a median household income is $55,000 to a median household in Saratoga that's $101,000, right? So apples to oranges when we're talking about certain things. And I do genuinely appreciate the conversation that took place, right? That doesn't mean I also appreciate everything that was said, but I understand, right? That there's always going to be multiple sides to a discussion and any type of a debate. But what I'll say is there's no debate in this. And the kids participating in our program are benefiting not just as athletes, they're benefiting as people because of the people that you see right here. These people every day pour into these kids. They're giving rise. We, none of us make a dollar doing what we do, but we do it because we're rich morally, because we're rich with love, we're rich with family, and that's what we talk. We don't say "one team, one family" for no reason. There's nobody in here I wouldn't give the shirt on my back for, and they would do the same for me and anybody in my family. So it goes a lot deeper than that. And also, like, we talk about kids having things to do and being productive members of our community, right? So the thing is, we have a certain amount of kids that are already participating. We would like to continue to grow that. From 2021, when I first took over the program, we only had about six, seven teams total. That includes cheer, tackle, flag, everything. Now, we've more than tripled that across the board. We're continuing to get more and more engagement with kids, and that's the idea. We want to get more kids involved. We want, there's over 10,000 kids in the school district in Schenectady alone. We would like to try to make a bigger and bigger dent in that every single year. So yes, we're asking for some funding this time around, but that doesn't mean we're not sustainable. I can guarantee you this, we will continue to grow, we will continue to push, and we will continue to work together as a unit, and we will do great things, and we appreciate any and all support that you all offer, and we thank you for that.
Thank you. All right. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public comment on the legislative agenda closed. Sir, you were asking, you were looking, you'd have to move to the microphone. Is this to speak about something that's on the agenda? It's not about anything that's on the legislative agenda? Okay, so we will give you an opportunity to sign up for general city business that's not right now, and I'll give the sheet back to the council member. You can sign up for that. That's at the end of the meeting, if it's not on the agenda. So I'll call you for that. It's not right now. Thank you. This time, ask for approval of the legislative consent agenda. Will by Mr. Williams. Second by, oh, wait, second by Mr. Mutaviran. All in favor?
Aye.
We do have one item for roll call. And the clerk could please read item number two.
Item number two for original consideration, a resolution authorizing fee waivers for exterior building permit repairs.
I need a motion. Motion by Ms. Williams, second. Second by Mr. Mancini. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, Mr. Williams.
I just wanted to clarify my comments that were made during the committee meeting. My opposition to this is based on just wanting to have a better understanding of what it represents. There seems to be just some not clarifying details. And sincerely, if we are looking to have these types of cost savings for a specific population, building them into the budget, I think is a more appropriate manner with this being in its fourth iteration or fourth year. Definitely with ensuring that it is meeting the tangible needs of our homeowners, as in hearing some conversations around this in our past meetings of trying to entice redevelopment and renovation within the homes where it is so rarely needed. Just wanting to have just some of those tangibles outlined to include potential marketing to ensure that everyone knows and understands what the program is and then also what it isn't.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If the clerk could please call the roll.
Mr. Farley? Mr. Mancini? Mr. Mutaviran? Ms. Patrick? Mr. Williams? Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. First of all, I would like to, just to explain my vote. So I view this legislation from the lens of giving an incentive to homeowners and owners of rental property in Schenectady and how we treat other investors in the city. Developers and business investors who seek to do business in the city of Schenectady are given various incentives to entice them to have their business located here. There are tax credits, discounts on supplies and materials, pilots, payment in lieu of taxes, and sometimes just the benefit of being well-connected. Most of our residents do not have those resources available to them. Even within the New York State's budget of 2026, it was recognized that the general public needed to have the ability to purchase single- and two-family homes before institutional real estate investors. And therefore, they added Article 16 to the real property tax law, which states that one-to-two-family residents must be listed for sale to the general public for 90 days before institutional investors can take it, can bid on it. So considering all of that, and that while we incentivize major real estates and developers, I think we should also take this opportunity to invest in our local homeowners. I understand what Councilman Williams is saying, that we need to build it into our budget, and that we do need to have some understanding on how it's done going forward. And I appreciate that. And I just want homeowners to know, we appreciate that the property owners who are investing and improving in their property. And they should also be aware that when there's major improvements that go beyond the aesthetics of painting, fixing, painting, peeling paint, broken rails, et cetera, beyond the aesthetics, if there's major improvements, that could cause a rise into the assessment of their properties. But that's something they would want to take on. So I think there's an upside to that in terms of the increase in assessment, because they've improved their property, but also because renters are getting their properties improved as well, and that we're giving some incentives to our landlords and small property owners. So with that, I vote yes. And the motion passes four to two. At this time, we'll have privilege of the floor regarding general city business. And I have six people signed up to speak. The first person is Sean Radigan.
Yeah, hey, good evening. My name's Sean Radigan. And I've spoken here before on how, as a homeowner in Schenectady, protecting tenants with good cause eviction is important to me. And today, I'd like to speak on the importance I have care and respect when operating in the housing business. When your income depends on providing a roof over someone else's head, you'd better take their living conditions and their life circumstances seriously. These are people's lives we're talking about, their home, their community, where their children go to school, and where they play sports. When a landlord decides to evict a tenant, they're deciding to uproot one or more people's lives, this shouldn't be something taken lightly. This should be something, this shouldn't be a decision made without a good cause. Tenants deserve safe, affordable, stable housing. Tenants should know that Schenectady has their back if the landlord files an eviction for something other than non-payment, violating the lease, violating the law, or taking the unit off the market. Tenants shouldn't fear landlords retaliating against them with eviction for arbitrary reasons or because they requested repairs on their apartment. Landlords, when you get into the business of someone else's housing, you better be putting people before profits. I bought a house because I couldn't put up with my landlord raising the rent exorbitantly every year when I renewed my lease. And now I have 15 years of relatively stable housing payments to the bank. Because the city taxes, they really don't go up that much every year. So it's kind of wild to me that landlords who have the outright capital to purchase property or the credit to get long-term stable loans and then use the rents paid to them every month to pay those loans back, will still increase the rents, refuse or ignore repairs, suggest terrible repair options, provide under-insulated units, take months to repair an elevator, or perform any other repairs that deeply impact the way tenants live. Good Cause Eviction still lets landlords file evictions. It's not going to make it harder to evict a tenant for a justifiable reason. And in California, good cause law helps speed up courts by getting rid of bunk, no-fault eviction cases. Schenectady City Council, good cause eviction is good for the city's operation, it's good for the community, it's good for the people that actually live here. Why shouldn't we afford our 57% renter community these protections? Please, put the people first. Thank you.
Thank you. Earl Wallace? Okay, sir. No problem. Ellie Pepper?
Good evening again, Mayor, Council President, and City Council Members. Just for the record, I'm Ellie Pepper, and I live in the Eastern Ave neighborhood. I have lived here for 30 years. Since New York's Emergency Rental Assistance Program protections ended in January of 2023, Schenectady has likely seen over 3,500 eviction filings, based on an average of about 175 filings per month. That's more than 3,500 families brought into court, many of whom were paying rent and following the rules, but still faced losing their homes without a clear reason. We also know that eviction is a leading driver of homelessness. In a single school year, more than 500 students in the Schenectady School District were identified as homeless. That's not just a statistic, it's a sign of families living in crisis and kids struggling to learn without stable housing. Good Cause Eviction is one way we can prevent this. It says that landlords must have a valid reason, like non-payment of rent or a serious lease violation, before evicting someone. It also gives tenants the right to challenge extreme rent hikes. This isn't about stopping rent increases altogether, it's about preventing sudden abusive increases that are meant to force people out. And to be clear, this isn't rent control. Good Cause doesn't freeze rents, it doesn't set prices. Landlords can still raise rent reasonably each year and still pursue eviction for a cause. The law also exempts small owner-occupied buildings with fewer than four units. We've seen how this works elsewhere. In New York City, since good cause protections were enacted in April 2024, eviction filings have dropped significantly, down to about 9,300 per month compared to 15,000 per month before the pandemic. In California, a study showed that cities with just cause eviction laws saw statistically significant drops in eviction filings. And in Albany, tenants use local good cause rules to stop 50% to 100% rent hikes and stay in their homes. These policies work, they keep people housed, and they reduce the number of evictions flooding our courts. Schenectady has the chance to do the same. With thousands of eviction filings just since last year, we can't afford to keep waiting. We need this protection in place now for our families, for our neighborhoods, and for the future of this city. I urge you to vote to opt Schenectady into the Good Cause Eviction Law. It's not that radical, it's fair, it's tested, and it's necessary. And also, I support funding for Belmont Pop Warner. Thank you.
Dean Marabado?
Hello again all. I am Dean Marabado, 30-year city resident. And I would encourage you also to opt into Good Cause Eviction. It seems like the thing to do, it should be done. I also wanted to comment on Belmont Pop Warner. I was able to attend the committee meeting and heard their presentation by the members of Pop Warner. And it seems like it's already supported through the community and through the parents. And I see no reason to have the committee, City Council, not support it as well emotionally and financially. It's a good thing for kids to do, it's a good thing for kids to be involved with their parents and the parents to be involved with their kids. It's just a good thing, and I support it totally. Thank you.
Thank you. Bridget Savage Spies?
Hello, my name is Bridget Savage Spies. I live in Albany, and I volunteer organizing tenants throughout the Capitol District. And so I wanted to give some context on what Good Cause has done for Albany, so that you guys can understand the reason why I think it's a good idea to pass in Schenectady as well. While organizing tenant unions and working with tenants in the Capitol District, I've seen some pretty appalling conditions, largely in large properties owned by multimillion-dollar corporations that are based out of state and have very little tangible support in the property itself. These multimillion-dollar corporations frequently buy up these properties, they don't develop them, they don't improve them, and they frequently increase rent by 30% to 50% on families and community members who are already living there. In 2022, one of the largest housing complexes in Albany was purchased by one of these companies. Several of the tenants there eventually got fed up with the extreme lack of maintenance. There were rodents everywhere throughout the building, and they were refusing to send exterminators in to fix the problem. They had broken appliances, mold throughout the building, and none of it was being addressed. And so these tenants came to the United Tenants of Albany and tried to form a housing union in order to address these problems with management collectively and head-on, because they weren't being addressed in these one-to-one conversations. So after Albany's good cause protections were struck down, one of these tenant organizers received a bill for a, received a $600 a month rent increase. And so she was then forced to continue, she was able to continue to live in her home, paying $600 more a month temporarily, but she still had mold in her bathroom, and her kid with asthma was still sick. And this is the kind of thing that Good Cause prevents, is parents and community members are able to stay in their homes without predatory rent hikes just for asking for basic living conditions. This winter, though, with good cause protections back in Albany, now that we could opt into them through the state, there was a better story where heat went out in an 80-plus unit complex in the center of downtown Albany. Those residents called United Tenants and concerned that if they made a complaint to code enforcement, that they would be subject to these predatory rent increases that other places had seen. They had good reason to be concerned about this. But United Tenants was able to reassure them that Good Cause would protect them in the case that they made a complaint to code enforcement about it being the middle of January and their rooms being 50 degrees. This is what Good Cause can do for a community. Landlords that are present in the community maintain their property and raise rents just to keep up with their costs are not affected by Good Cause eviction protections.
Your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Patricia Reed? Patricia Reed? I'm sorry, it's Patrice.
Hi, my name is Patricia Reed.
We can hear you.
Okay. Before I start, can I give all these papers to you guys? My name is Patricia Reed. I was here last year, July 1st, 2024. I'm trying to, I've been trying to open this business in Schenectady, the Park of, Central Park, City of Schenectady, like since 2022. So I remember all these faces, hopefully you guys remember me. I was here trying to see if I can open a small business in City of Schenectady. But the City of Schenectady has been giving me runaround, like, oh, you do this, do this. I did everything the City of Schenectady asked me to do. I've been paid for insurance, they told me to pay for insurance, I paid for the insurance, I got all that done. After, uh, last year, July 15th, Ms. Marion, I, I sent an email to follow up to what was going on, and she sent me an email saying, somebody from the city will send me something to see where we can start the business. So from that time, 2024, the 15th, I've been following up, I've been coming here, saying, oh, can I speak to the City Council? I was always told, oh, leave your number, they'll call you back. I never got a call back. Mr. Alfonso, I always email him, I never got an email back. So I'm here to see what's going on, why I can't get an opportunity to open a business at Central Park in Schenectady. I'm not bringing, like, something bad, I'm trying to bring something good for the community in the City of Schenectady. So why I can't get that chance to open that business in the City of Schenectady. And it's been like since 2022. I did everything the City of Schenectady asked me to do. It's like now, today, I didn't, I didn't even have anything, so I was like, I'm just gonna go over there to see what's going on, what I can do, what else can I do for me to be able to open a business in City of Schenectady? This is a small business, it'll be good for the community, that's what I think. I think it'll be good for the community, and it's for everybody. Kids, older people can use it. So that's why I gave you the paperwork, so that you guys, you can remember me the last time I was here. So I would like to have the opportunity to open a, a small business, Central Park, City of Schenectady. And if there's any reason why I can't, I would like to know that too. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak on public comment and regular city business, so I declare this public comment period closed. At this time, entertain any miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, I sincerely just wanted to go before Mr. Farley. With regards to the Belmont program, and before I make any comments regarding that, I sincerely want to thank everyone for coming out to speak. Although my comments will be directed to the, the president, it takes a good effort and confidence to come and speak at the podium. I think a lot of people take it, or undervalue how uncomfortable it is to speak in this type of setting, but sincerely, sharing your opinions wherever they reside, I take vigorous notes and I do it for a reason, because I care, and your perspective helps me understand how to advocate for my position. But I want to speak specifically to the young men and women that are in this room. Although my back is to you sincerely, your, your hearts are, are with me right now. These seats that we sit in, they have term limits, but sincerely, the blood, sweat, the investments that are being poured into you, that lasts a lifetime. And as you can tell, a lot of the people that are doing this work now were in your seats. So take this seriously. And it is not for you to begin, because I already know you are doing this good work of being shepherds and ambassadors for the legacy that you're pouring into, but you are that legacy also right now. So as we look at justifying the continued investment into these types of efforts, I think it requires us viewing how we fund things in this municipality from a standpoint of, if we proactively address issues, do we have the discussion of continually to fund our overtime at an excessive level? And that is only one facet of why I think looking at things through a different lens provides us opportunities to address the needs of our community in a different way. So as we enter the year of 2026, and those budgeting needs are being taken into consideration, understand what is potentially about to happen with this upcoming vote, and regardless of where our council stands, understanding that there are people in this room, there are people outside of this room that love you. So hold on to that and carry forward properly.
Thank you. Mr. Farley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank everyone that came out today and has been out and has come out in the past to, uh, address City Council. This seat that we sit in comes with tough decisions that have to be made, and these should always be spirited conversations, but not mean-spirited conversations. And I am what you call a straight shooter, if you will. I say what I mean and, and try to mean what I say. When I'm calling someone in, it's important that you recognize I am addressing a behavior, and I'm criticizing a behavior and not a person. And that is our obligation, what we're obligated to do when we sit in these seats, to exchange ideas with one another and say, hey, I disagree with that, or hey, this doesn't align with who we say we are publicly. And I think that those are tough, that's a tough standard to be held to, but that's the exact standard that we ought to be held to in our position. And to disagree with me on a position doesn't make you a disagreeable person. And there are, part of this job, if you will, is giving concessions and, and making compromises. I'm always willing to do that, that's what we saw happen today. However, there are certain areas that we can, we can't afford to compromise on, and that is definitely our youth. There, that money that is invested, not the cost that we're spending, but the investment, that dollar stays in our community. Not only does it enrich the lives of our young people, it also relaxes some of the money that we have to spend being in reaction to lack of programs like Belmont. That comes at a cost, too. So I just want to really uplift the fact, and I appreciate, um, the committee members and Ms. Patrick engaging in this conversation in a way that did not shut out the ideas of people, but was willing to really listen, compromise, and be responsive, be a responsive leader. That's what I aspire us all to continue to be, and I just, again, deeply appreciate Belmont, the work you're doing, and one team, one family. Thank you.
Ms. Patrick.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I agree with what Mr. Farley said. I had actually written down a very similar statement about, you know, sitting at this table means that you have to make difficult decisions and difficult choices, and that's just goes along with, with the job. That goes along with the job of being part of a team, that we have to be working together and listening to each other and listening to each other's thoughts and, and opinions as well. I did compromise today. I do hope that folks understand that, you know, this is a one-time, that ARPA funding that we used.
Ms. Patrick.
The ARPA funding that we used today is not going to be here after this year, so, you know, I hope folks understand that this was a one-time grant. The idea that I came in with tonight was that when we start to discuss the 2026 budget, under the direction of our Parks Director, I think we need to think about what we want to do for youth recreation. That is my committee, Health and Recreation, and we spend a lot of time talking about our fields, talking about our parks, talking about the golf course, where indeed we made an investment into the golf course, which is one area of the city where we generate revenue through the golf course, so that was a sound investment in something that had not been worked on for years. So I think that next year, we will have to think about this in terms of all the youth activities. Mr. Farley and I met on a committee that was working on youth programs in the city well before either one of us was on City Council. And I think that it's important for us to continue to understand that anything we do, we have a very robust summer recreation program planned in our parks this summer, and hopefully those opportunities will help the youth that come, whether they're coming to swim in the pool, whether they're coming to play a sport, whether they're going to be coming and taking part in arts and crafts activities, or ecological, environmental kinds of activities. All of those kinds of things are a way to make sure that our youth are having robust opportunities this, this summer. I also have to say that it was really important to me that we were able to hire as many youths from our high school that we will be employing this summer. That's really important to me, because those kids are going to understand and learn job responsibilities and job skills that will only go on to benefit them as they continue with their, with their lives and their careers in our town. So that was a challenging discussion. I definitely came in prepared to not vote in favor of that funding, so I think that the compromise that we came to is a reasonable one, but I do think that all of our youth sports need to understand that they will continue to have to fundraise, as they all do, moving forward. Okay, and I also want to say that, again, the Schenectady County Food Council is holding a Food and Poverty Speak Out on Wednesday, June 11th, at 6:30 at the Rotterdam Community Center. This is going to be a real opportunity for folks to come out and really tell us about what they're needing in terms of their, in terms of food. As someone that volunteers quite extensively fighting food insecurity in our, in our city, in our county, actually, this has just been this huge increase in the numbers of people that our food providers are serving, every single one of them. There's 23 food providers in Schenectady County, but this is a chance for people to come out and talk about their needs. And let me tell you, when you hear people talk about, you know, that food's sort of the last thing because they have to pay their rent, they have to pay their utilities, they have to pay for a car to get themselves to work, and so often they end up with no food after they, after they spend their money. So again, Wednesday, June 11th, 6:30 PM at the Rotterdam Community Center. And the other piece is that the Schenectady County Food Council has a survey out as well to try to get information about what people are experiencing in terms of food costs, food insecurity, how they're getting their nutritional needs met. And so I hope that folks will pay attention to that as well. It's all, it's on Facebook, it's on the website for the, for, for the Schenectady Foundation, and I encourage people to, it's in English, Spanish, and Arabic, so I encourage people to do that. And then again, I also want to give, I know we still have a few weeks, but we will be doing a reading of the Declaration of Independence again on July 4th at 10:30 in the morning here at City Hall, hopefully on the steps of City Hall, hopefully it won't rain. I'm feeling not so positive about that these days. So I hope people will come out and celebrate the Fourth of July with us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Discussion is always lively, thought-provoking, and good for the community. Yield the rest of my time, Madam President.
Thank you. I also would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight to making your voice heard on the various topics that we heard this evening. I appreciate the young people coming to see what the process looks like and the adults, the work that the adults put in for you. So, you know, one day, if you want to, you could be sitting up here as well or sitting on one of those chairs. So if you stay in Schenectady, we'd love to have that, and we hopefully, people will understand that as we did our work today, as we talked about what needed to happen or what was going to happen, please appreciate the fact that it was the person that entered the room was saying, you know, it was going to be an absolute no. And so we were able to move to a compromise. In our process, often that is what we have to do. I personally am committed to giving, helping you in any way possible to identify resources to raise the rest of your funds, because I think, I know that the work that you do is important. I've never had a child in Pop Warner, but I've seen children that have come through, I've seen, actually been to games, so I know the work that you do is important, and investing in our children, regardless of the sport that they are in, is extremely important. So thank you for coming out, thank you for having your voices heard, and thank you for helping to, help us to, to move this process along, to all the council members. I want to thank you for getting us to that point.
Just one off-record comment.
Off the record, it's off the record.
That if you have goals in this chamber, the seats you want are the council ones, the public has the worst seats, and those benches, the second worst are up here, but the City Council members have the best, so they... Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. I just want to, for those of you who missed the Kids Arts Fest this weekend around City Hall, it was wonderful. The rain came, but we didn't go inside, we put on our raincoats and we went outside, and by the time it cleared up, so it was a great time. And so for those parents who don't, aren't aware of it, every year, it happens around City Hall, it's a great opportunity for kids to come out. I want to note also, this year, they had a cultural addition to it that I'd not seen before, they had people come from the Iroquois Nation to come and do their, to do a dance and to sing songs, so it was great exposure for the, for, for the community. So I want to thank the folks that put that on, and for all the vendors that were there at the Kids Arts Fest. And by the way, everything is free to the kids coming just to, you know, have a good time in their community, so that's another event. I want to mention that Juneteenth is coming up, the celebration of Juneteenth, on the 20th and 21st of this month. The 20th will be in Central Park, and as many of us know, Walter Simkins, our dear beloved community member who has passed on, really led that, but still we will be there in his honor on the 20th in Vale Cemetery. And then on the 21st, we will be in, in Central Park, celebrating Juneteenth. So asking everyone to please come out and to participate in that. And to Ms. Reed, I'll speak to you specifically, I believe my email to you was that Corporation Council was going to be looking into your, your situation. I will review that email again and, and follow up with you on that, because I know that they were taking a look at, at, at your situation. So if you want, well, you can speak after the meeting, and I'd be glad to, to just give you more information on that. And I have nothing more to add to that, so at this time, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by, everyone, moved by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Mutavaren, all those in favor? Aye. We adjourned, have a good night.